The temp, the meeting is called order. Number two, roll call the board members.
Cox?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Clerk.
Number three, discuss and or take action on consent agenda, on all items under the consent agenda will be heard consecually unless opposition is presented, in which case the contested items will be considered, discussed, and appropriate action taken separately. At eight minutes from November the twelfth.
The town of Bradley held a regular Board of Trustees meeting on Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. The meeting was held at the Bradley Community Building located at three twenty-two McKee Street, Bradley, Oklahoma. Uh, call to order, board member Earl Cox called the meeting to order at seven oh one P M. Roll call, town clerk Rachel Snyder called the roll, board of trustee members present were as follows, Earl Cox, Zana Shipman, Dean Beverly. Therefore, a forum was established. Discuss and or take action on cons- consent agenda, Earl Cox read items on the consent agenda. Earl Cox moved to approve the consent agenda. Dean Beverly seconded it, votes were as follows. Cox, yes, Shipman, yes, Beverly, yes. Discuss and or take action on mail received, Earl Cox made a motion to pay all bills, votes were as follows. Cox, yes, Shipman, yes, Beverly, yes. Discuss and or take action on purchase orders for Ascoth membership and mullet hunter bonds. Earl Cox made a motion to approve the purchase orders, votes were as follows, Cox, yes, Shipman, yes, Beverly, yes. Discuss or take action on the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five budget, accountant Barbara Fowler. Barbara Fowler, a town, town accountant, presented the town budget to the Board of Trustees and the town residents. Barbara Fowler also requested town of Bradley Resolution twenty twenty-four dash three. Taking the town to a budget format of the Oklahoma Municipal Budget Act be signed. Earl Cox made a, a motion to approve the budget and signing of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash three. Dean Beverly seconded the motion, votes were as follows, Cox, yes, Shipman, yes, Beverly, yes. Discuss and or take action on town involvement in seasonal town parties. Rachel Snyder, town clerk clarified that the town is not allowed to use town funds for seasonal parties, events, or fundraisers. Rachel Snyder, town clerk, also stated that the items purchased for the rural water district number three Halloween party were purchased using Pat Cox and Rachel Snyder's personal funds, receipts were provided. Earl Cox made a motion to approve that only personal funds may be used and or collected for contribution to seasonal town parties. Dean Beverly seconded the motion, the mo- the votes were as follows, Cox, yes, Shipman, yes, Beverly, yes. Discuss and or take action on selecting town letterhead. Rachel Snyder, town clerk, stated that the town need an official town letterhead to present a more professional appearance to outside vendors, municipalities, et cetera. Vera Baker submitted three samples for consideration by the Board of Trustees. Earl Cox made a motion to approve sample number one, Dean Beverly seconded the motion, votes were as follows. Earl Cox, yes, Zana Shipman, yes, Dean Beverly, yes. Discuss and or take action on removing Dean Sokow from the Liberty National Bank account. As stated last month, they wanted exact wording in the minutes in order for it to be done according, the way the bank wanted. Earl Cox made a motion to remove Dean Sokow from Liberty Bank account. Dean Beverly seconded the motion, votes were as follows, Earl Cox, yes, Zana Shipman, yes, Dean Beverly, yes. Discuss and or take action on Mayor Earl Cox, Chair two, Zana Shep- Shipman, Chair three, Dean Beverly, and town clerk Rachel Snyder to be added to Liberty National Bank account. Earl Cox made a motion to approve, Dean Beverly seconded the emotion. The motion, not emotion, I apologize. Votes were as follows, Cox, yes, Shipman, yes, Beverly, yes. Discuss and or take action on update on ARPA. Rachel Snyder, town clerk, updated the Board of Trustees as she has successfully gained access to the ARPA port, reporting portal. Rachel requested that she be allowed to continue working on reporting slash obligating the ARPA funds. Earl Cox made a motion to approve, Dean Beverly seconded the emo- the motion. Votes were as follows, Cox, yes, Shipman, yes, Beverly, yes. Discuss and or take action on contracting with Amy Loggins to assist Rachel Snyder, town clerk, with ARPA reporting. Rachel Snyder, town clerk, presented a resume from Amy Logging, Loggins, outlining Amy's education of a master's in business administration and her current position as Director of Operations and federal grant facilitator at Alex Public School. Rachel Snyder, town clerk, stated that as she has never worked on a federal grant before, she is requesting that Amy be allowed to assist slash train Rachel in the requirements for reporting and obligating the ARPA funds the town received, so that the town gets in compliance and no funds will need to be returned to the treasury. The stipend for Amy Loggins is five hundred dollars. Earl Cox made a motion to approve Amy Loggins and the five dollar, five hundred dollar stipend. Dean Beverly seconded the motion, votes were as follows. Earl Cox, yes, Sh- Zana Shipman, yes, Dean Beverly, yes. Community comments, as we have implemented community comments on the agenda, allowing the residents to speak, but no one chose to speak at our last meeting, so I just put none, because no one spoke. Adjourn, Earl Cox made a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-two P M, votes were as follows, Cox, yes, Shipman, yes, Beverly, yes. Signed and dated twelfth day of November, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, now fee, paying the bill, P S O, all accounts, R W D, all accounts, and waste connection, O N G, and nickel decks, I make a motion.
Second it, yes. The next one is from Natalie, who wrote solid waste bill that she does. Estuas, numbers, checks, all three roll rubs, waters bills are on one, with each one being designated in the memo section. And that was okay. The accountant said that was fine. Those checks are mighty standing. All four of the P S O accounts, the waste connections, and then the O N G, and those all get paid online.
I got a question on the attorney, is this still set up like it's supposed to be? Are we getting reimbursed at the end of each month?
Not the end of each month, we signed a contract, we paid him the five thousand for the year. At the end of the year, any funds that are still on there will be returned to us, and a new contract will be presented. That way, and I keep an eye on the few times that we've used them this year. I keep an eye, I get a statement every month showing what they're deducting from it.
The personal encroaching part of that drawing.
Okay, let me talk. Discuss and or take action on application for replacement certificate of title for fire crew. I make a motion, we do that.
Okay, um, I need some more information, I have the VIN number, I just need the, um, any of this, I don't know, I mean, where we got it or anything, signature, title holders, so I'm gonna need. Wanted you to go to the tag on this, this is all it's gonna need, and they'll be able to help you fill this out, and do that.
I know, I know some techy about that.
Yeah, yeah, they gave it to us, they should be entitled to someone who. He gotta get lost, the paperwork.
Okay.
You talking about that seventy-five Dodge, or seventy-four Dodge pumper truck?
It's a seventy-five Dodge.
That's the one that the county, uh, gave back to the town when they requested it.
Okay, I wasn't here when that was done, so I, I, and I couldn't find anything on it, so that's why.
It disappeared, I guess, a while back, 'cause I know I was the one that transferred the title and everything to y'all, so. But, yeah, go tag off, so it gets your replacement title, no problem.
You're gonna have to make the motion to approve that.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve that.
Second it.
Yes.
Number five, discuss and take action on adoption of resolution for Grady County. I per.
Mitigation planning.
Mitigation planning team.
Okay, um, I received this in the mail, and it is the town of Bradley, Bradley Town Council, P O Box one fifteen Bradley, Oklahoma. Whereas, town of Bradley with the assistance from the Grady County mitigation planning team has gathered information and prepared the Grady County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And whereas the Grady County Hazard Mitigation Plan has been prepared in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand. And whereas, town of Bradley is a local unit of government that has afforded the citizens an opportunity to comment and provide input in the plan and the actions in the plan. Whereas, town of Bradley have reviewed the plan and affirms that the plan will be updated no less than every five years. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town of Bradley Council and adopts the Grady County Hazard Mitigation Plan as this jurisdiction's natural hazard mitigation plan. This is all I have found.
Do you want me to elaborate on that?
Would you please, sir?
The hazard, Grady County Hazard Mitigation Plan, we have to update our plan every five years. We're in charge of the, all the municipalities in the county and all the public schools in the county, and we offer them the opportunity to become part of our hazard mitigation plan, which has been like this, like this for about the last fourteen years. So, uh, Chickasha was the last one to write their own plan, and fourteen years ago, they jumped on board with us. Basically, what this plan is, is if you have a duly appointed emergency manager, whether it's part-time, whether it's volunteer, whatever, this emergency manager can help. There are projects inside the, the plan that have to do with storm shelters, uh, awnings and stuff for parking, uh, storm sirens, uh, road work, you know, just about anything that can mitigate some kind of incident, whether it's a flood, an ice storm, a tornado, a wildland fire, or anything. And if you or any other jurisdiction in the county or any school would like to apply for federal funds for a designated project that is in our hazard mitigation plan, there's a whole list of, of things, which I can provide a copy of the plan and re- if you want to, but, um, there's a whole list, it's about probably fifty to a hundred different projects that, uh, a school or a municipality can do. And if they're interested in doing that for their jurisdiction, they have to put in a notice of intent with state emergency management hazard mitigation team. And you have to, like I say, I'll just use an example, for example. Here at the community center, say you wanna build awnings out here, uh, for vehicles, keep them from getting haled on, or something to that effect, or covered walkways going into the community building to prevent somebody from getting injured from hailing.
I didn't mean to snicker, that would have been real helpful last year when I was at the town office, and my one-month-old vehicle got fifteen thousand dollars when I held that much.
And, and, and I like to use that because that is an approved project in the, in our plan, that a, a town could apply for. But what you would do is, like I said, if you have a designated emergency manager with some training from state and from my office and everything, we can show them how the town could apply for this awning system, which you would get three vendors that does this for a living and say, okay, this is what I want, I want this awning that goes all across the parking lot and a covered wa- uh, walkway up to your building. It's gonna cost fifteen thousand dollars, or, uh, let's just say ten thousand dollars. So you would put that quote in with your notice of intent and say you want ten thousand dollars worth of funding for this project. Then they would meet and say, yeah, we've got this money set aside, that would be a worthy project. Or, no, we don't have the money right now because there's no federal funds available. And if they did award it to you, then you could get seventy-five percent of this project covered by FEMA. You would have to spend the money ahead of time and then be reimbursed for it, but.
If we put out ten thousand, we'd be being reimbursed seventy-five percent, which is seventy-five hundred. So, I mean, the town's really only out.
You're only at twenty-five percent.
I see what you're saying.
And the twenty-five percent, you can be some kind of in-kind maintenance on it, or in-kind work, I should say. Your, your position as clerk, you know, you're taking care of, of the paperwork, and you write your time, record your time. You might have someone from the town, maybe an employee, do some of the preliminary dirt work, or get the county to help you with some of the dirt work that's worth a thousand dollars. So that would go to your twenty-five percent in-kind match.
Okay.
But, the key to this is every municipality and school has to adopt this if they want to participate in the plan and possibly get some funding. We've only had about two or three jurisdictions, city Chickasha, naturally Grady County, and I think Blanchard, because they have some property in Grady County, that has actually applied for federal funding and received part of it. Uh, I did, uh, storm, uh, safe room projects, uh, for the whole county. And if somebody wanted to, you know, once we got an approval for that, then the twenty-five percent match would be paid for by the customer to put a new sh- safe room in their progress. So FEMA would have paid seventy-five percent of it, and the individual would have paid the twenty-five percent match. So that's just an example of one project. But, every municipality and every school has to sign, as it says, that they agree with the planning and being part of the hazard mitigation plan. Now, if you don't wanna ever use it, you know, if, that's up to y'all, or if you would like to use it, that's up to you. So, and all you gotta do, if you've got an interest in a specific project, you can call me. Uh, I can let you know, or like I say, I can even, uh, mail you a, a paper copy of it, 'cause it's a big file on the computer.
I would appreciate that if you would mind.
But anyway, that's, that's what we have, 'cause we have to actually, once it's approved, we have to take, send that to Region Sixty, then, to approve.
See, I was gonna discuss this and ask for permission to research and get ahold of someone.
Okay, I make a motion, approve.
I'll second it, yes.
And should y'all ever have any questions about that, you can have Rach- Rachel, is that your name?
Yes, sir.
You could, well, she has my email, and.
Do I?
Yes, 'cause I sent it to you, email. But, uh, you know, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. Got a project or something like that, I'll be glad to come back to your meeting when you have one, explain some things to you in more detail if you need to.
Do you have a card with you, or do you think, if you don't mind, sir, I'd appreciate it? It's getting a little tropical in here, Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Um, so I can just scan this and email it back to you?
Yes, yes.
I didn't know if you'd need the original.
No, scan, scan copy will be fine.
Okay.
Okay, are there, are there, scholars on this?
No.
Those scholars?
No. And just an FYI, you know, I had said something about an emergency manager. State law, under Title sixty-nine of the statutes, says that if a municipality, whether it be a city or a town, or the above, if you do not have a designated person as the emergency manager, the mayor has to step in and take that, the highest elected official has to serve as the emergency manager. So, you know, and like I say, if you want to appoint somebody that's part-time, or a volunteer, or something like that, there is some training that they need to go through with us and with the state. And, you know, they're no charge, they just probably would have to attend some training and stuff, but, uh, uh, if you ever wanna ask any questions about that, just let me know too.
Okay, number six, discuss and take action on fencing at town park.
It was, um, brought to me that the town park has no barrier between it and the streets. So if the little kids are playing, they're playing with balls, they run into the street, what would our liability be for not having that perimeter so that the kids can't get out, is what it was brought to me.
I don't think you're liable, but it's not on.
I don't think the town would be liable if there's an accident in the street.
Okay, well, that, I mean, I'm just putting it on there because it was brought to me, to put it on there.
You're talking about a containment barrier to keep them inside, it's not a dog park, you know?
Right, and long that is, if a kid gets hurt up there, they actually can sue the board members personally.
If they get hurt, if they get hurt on the property of the park, yes.
Or if they run out, 'cause we're liable for the town of Bradley.
We're liable from fifteen feet from the easement to the middle of the roadway.
Do you have that statute printed out?
No.
No.
That's saying we're all bonded to help cover us on that.
Yeah, you've gotta be bonded with them, Ed.
But if we, they can supermorn that bond, believe me.
It wouldn't be any different than somebody walking in here and slipping on the floor.
Right, same thing.
Or something, it's property of the town, so you're liable for.
Yeah, exactly.
Or at least discuss it.
Yeah, but if somebody gets hit out in the street out here, how are you liable for that? Even if a child gets hit in the street out front of the community building.
Because it's the town of Bradley's street.
Yeah.
It's our street.
Well, first of all, you don't need people riding fullers in the park like today.
As long as there's signings, proper signings, stuff like that, town of Bradley, speed limit.
And I've seen people drive like maniacs down that park.
Somebody hits a kid, and then they'd say, why don't you have speed limits signs, and they give all that, so you gotta, you have to mark it.
And very, like, Mr. Beverly just said there in the back, there are people that are riding motorbikes and ATVs through that park. And what if it's, okay, you know, let's say it's my niece, who's nine years old. She's old enough to go two blocks from my house, maybe three blocks from my house, with her eight-year-old brother and play on the equipment.
Well, well.
And they go riding that ATV through there, and they get hit, because we didn't have any fencing to protect the children inside that park. We could be held liable.
Well, ATVs and gators have been a problem for a long time.
My bill is, as a council member here, I don't gonna sit back there and think that I could have prevented somebody's kid from getting wrong, get killed by something we could have done to prevent this. You know, I mean, it's just a small step that we can prevent somebody's kid from getting hurt, 'cause I, I don't lay down asleep at night thinking just 'cause I would put a fence up there, somebody's kid got wrong and killed, I don't, that in my conscience.
I thought it was already voted to get bids to have that fence put up, it was already approved for fencing.
Yeah, that was as far back as twenty-ten.
Okay, well, I haven't, I mean, this was just on that list of to-dos, it was not checked off, it was brought to me.
Well, I know, when we said I was still on the board, we voted to approve to get, uh, numerous people to see what it would cost, and then approved to have it done.
Okay.
That, I know that's on record, 'cause it, it, it happened a couple times while I was still on the board.
Okay, well.
I think a fence needs to be put up around that park.
Okay, I make a motion.
So.
Probably wouldn't hurt your feelings either way.
Start getting bids.
Yeah. 'Cause my bill is what's a kid's life worth kicking a ball at there or something, you know, I mean, it's, the person that runs over is gonna deal with the rest of their life, and then the parent's gonna deal with the rest of their life to a loss. You know?
Well, they just look at some of these citizens in Bradley, they drive like maniacs too.
Okay, number seven, discuss and take action on putting an enclosure around it. Utility at the park.
There's a utility.
Yeah, the pole, the three-pole berder.
That's accessible to the, and the box is accessible to the kids. Now, kids are kids, and they're gonna stick anything and everything they can and do stuff they shouldn't, yes, sir.
I personally don't see how that was ever checked off, 'cause that's not legal. The way they got it up there, I've done construction.
Yeah, I don't know how they done with that tip, right pole either, that's what I said.
That's not even considered a tip. It's not legal, that setup, it needs to be enclosed, or else law.
I make a motion.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Okay, number eight, discuss and take action on getting batteries for town tractor. I make a motion that we get batteries for town tractor.
We did do this last month for the excavator, which is separate from the tractor, that's why.
Yeah, second it.
Yes.
Ain't do no good setting it rotten.
Okay, number nine, discuss and or take action on update on ARPA.
I am going to, we should be having everything completed this week, Friday. Just wanted to let you know that the funds will be obligated, and our port, portion will be done until the portal opens up again on April of twenty twenty-five, where we can report it and close it out.
I make a motion, we approve that.
Second it.
Yes.
Okay, discuss and take action on update on P S O. As far as I know, we're done with the city lights. Everything that's on the, the work order that they had, I went over with them, all the lights are up.
I thought there was supposed to be another one put out here in the parking area.
Out here?
Yeah.
Didn't know anything about that.
From across the mole there.
Where now? Out here?
Where the dumpster is?
Oh, yeah.
On that side of the drive, 'cause it's darker than hell there at night. Might not ever got put on, I know we voted in.
Yeah, I don't think it ever got put on, I think just basically the street lights, basically what they're going for, just like a one on every block. Is what they go by. Is what they go by. They don't go like say, say one every hundred foot or two hundred foot, you know, it's just that one every block is what they put them. But what was presented to me and what they shall be what they was gonna do, all those should be complete. Uh, make a motion we approve that.
Second.
Yes.
Number eleven, discussing take action on emergency, or town emergency radios.
Okay, I received a request to be on town meeting agenda by Ms. Vera Baker. She has documented, um, say, after the meeting on April nineteenth, the twenty-twenty-four, during which the storm siren was discussed, former mayor Donna Thornburg stated that she would teach the trustees how to test the storm siren that requires a radio to activate it. I asked the town clerk if she knew where the town's emergency radios are, and she looked for them. I found purchase receipts and work orders in REIT grant pa, or REIT papers that I acquired from ASCOG with Donna Thornburg's name on them. Donna nominated your cousin Cody Prince to be the town's emerging, emergency management director during the meeting on February twenty-second of twenty-twenty-two. This nomination is not an official appointment, and it was never finalized because Cody's paperwork was not signed by the county emergency management director. During a text conversation with former trustee Darren Johnson, he stated that Alan Havens and former town clerk Anita Fowler each had radios. Donna resigned in April of twenty-twenty-three. The radios have never been returned to the town and are presumed to be missing, lost, damaged, and/or stolen slash embezzled. I asked that the radios be returned to the town, if the radios are not returned, I asked that the mayor or town clerk report the radios missing to the sheriff's department so they can be recovered or documented and recoverable. Allowing unauthorized individuals to retain possession of emergency radios is foolish and irresponsible. Only persons authorized by the state and the county emergency management director should have those radios. Replacing the lost radios would be a waste of taxpayer money unless the new radios are linked with the county emergency management office to ensure greater transparency and accountability to the citizens of Bradley. And that was a statement written by, typed out by Ms. Vera Baker. Um, modal, then there's pictures of what they looked like. There is a statement, uh, that four radios were purchased, um, on April of two thousand and eleven, uh, for fourteen hundred dollars, and then there was some other, I can't, I have heat glasses, um, rapid charging battery, an antenna for siren control, um, and some more radios purchased on three fourteen of twenty-twenty-two, seventeen hundred dollars. And then there's a copy of the, uh, special meeting from February of twenty-twenty-two. Um, and then the meeting minutes from twenty-twone, February twenty-second of twenty-two. There is a statement showing that they were paid for, the seventeen hundred dollars was paid on four-one of twenty-twenty-two, um. Then there is Town of Bradley Board Special Meeting, April nineteenth of twenty-twenty-four. Um, it's a copy of the agenda that JB posted. It says Earl Cox asked Donna during this meeting if there was anyone who tests the storm siren. Donna replied, we can show you how to sound it. The storm siren is activated, activated with a radio. The, the discussion continued with Donna demanding that Cody's nomination as the town's EMD be placed on the agenda and for the board to sign his paperwork. The state only acknowledges the mayor or the town clerk administrator as EMDs for the town. The matter was never placed on agenda or discussed any further. And then there is a screenshot of a conversation between myself and Ms. Vera. She asked me on September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four, did you ever locate the town's emergency radios or find out who has them? I said, not yet, but Mr. Cox and I have looked, only looked at the town barn building. Ms. Vera says, I think Donna still has them, the town clerk has never had them in her possession, and there is no log. Did you ever get the ARPA backup codes? I said, well, I don't know about that, as I wasn't here at the time, and I'm currently working on the ARPA backup codes as Donna has assisted me with finding the right people to assist me with the process. Vera replied, okay, good deal. Then there's a screenshot of her conversation with Mr. Darren Johnson. She, Ms. Vera says, remember those two-way radios Donna bought with REIT money? She kept one and gave the others to Kathy, Cody, and Coulter. I don't know who has the other one, should be the fire department. The new town clerk doesn't know where they are or who has them. They haven't been reported missing to the sheriff's office, I let the AG know about that too. Mr. Johnson replied, Anita and Alan had a radio, Anita set tornado alarm off with it. Okay, but she purchased four radios, where are they now? Darren says, I have no idea, that's been too long ago. Vera says, I found all the papers and got the serial numbers. Mr. Johnson replied, never really understood why we needed them, tornado sirens work off of outside pressure, and that's it.
Outside what?
Pressure.
Wind pressure, I guess.
Okay. We've never heard that before.
I, I'm just reading the documents I was given.
How I get this document, what I was told.
Wait, wait, before I've done what I was asked to do, I contacted the sheriff's department, I've contacted our town attorney. The sheriff's department, um, officer or deputy, sorry, deputy officer, deputy Reinhardt explained to me that if I was to go down, or the mayor, go down to the sheriff's department and file a police report that they were stolen, and we don't actually know that they were physically stolen, we have no proof that they were stolen. He said, for all you know, they fell off the back of a truck and got run over, they've gotten misplaced, they've gotten stepped on, they've gotten dropped. This, I'm just repeating what I was told. By filing that police report since, as stolen, since I don't know that they, like, our offices weren't broken or anything like that, that is me committing a crime.
False information.
Filing a false police report is what off, deputy Reinhardt told me. So I contacted our attorney. And I stapled this backwards, I apologize. To Bradley Board of Trustees and Town Clerk from Lucas M. West regarding missing town property walkie-talkies. Question, what, if any, steps should the town take to recover or seek penalties for town property that has gone missing? Specifically, walkie-talkies purchased with ASCOG funds. Answer slash explanation, this issue was raised by the town clerk in fall of twenty-twenty-four after a citizen, citizen notified her that the four walkie-talkies purchased with ASCOG funds had gone missing. The town clerk investigated their disappearance and determined the following. I was given this information, I didn't investigate, I just asked questions, um. One walkie-talkie was previously in the possession of a gentleman who is no, who is now deceased, and it is unknown what happened to to it following his death. One walkie-talkie was in the possession of a former town clerk for whom no contact information is known, and it is no, unknown what happened to it after they left office. Two walkie-talkies were in possession of prior town officials who reported they returned them upon leaving office. Following this investigation, a concerned citizen requested that the town notify law enforcement and report the walkie-talkies as stolen property. The clerk contacted Grady County Sheriff's Office to discuss the issue and determined what, to discuss the issue and determine whether a police report for stolen property was appropriate. The Grady County Sheriff's Office advised that there was insufficient evidence to suggest that the walkie-talkies were stolen, and that without firsthand knowledge by the town clerk making formal allegations that they were stolen could be tempt amount to a false police report. The sheriff also advised it was likely that the statute of limitations had expired. The city attorney agrees with the sheriff's office that there is insufficient firsthand knowledge and evidence support, to support either criminal charges or civil civil claims against the individuals who may have previously had possession of the walkie-talkies. The Town of Bradley has historically lacked comprehensive or reliable property inventory and management systems to track and safeguard town property. Although it is possible that the walkie-talkies were misappropriated, the town also bears responsibility for securing and maintaining its property. Negligent on, negligence on the part of previous town officials does not absolve misappropriation of town property. But without evi, any evidence to support intent on the part of previous holders to dispose the town of property, there is no action to be taken at this time. Further, the statute of limitations has likely expired for larcency based on when officials knew or should have known about the theft, if such theft did occur. Finally, the Grady County Sheriff's Office has provided advice on the matter, and filing a false police report or making overtures without evidence would open the town up to liability which would be far greater in severity and cost than the walkie-talkies in, in question. The town, the town would benefit from implementing policies and procedures for tracking, managing, controlling town property and inventory. Without these systems in place, it is highly likely that something like this could occur again in the future. Lucas M. West, city attorney. And just to let everybody know, I, the only town property besides the big machinery in the town barn, the laminator, the shredder, the printer, and the computer, and the Pioneer Internet Tower, I've listed them on a spreadsheet, I am going to be putting on their, uh, serial numbers. They do not leave the office as it is, but I'm putting it all on there, and where they're located. In the future, if we get any kind of equipment that is transportable, such as if we were to get emergency management radios, there's the three of you that would have one, or myself, and two of you, whatever the case may be. There will be a sheet for each individual one, and it would be signed out to you. You will sign it stating that if you do not return it upon leaving office, you would be responsible for the cost. I've looked into inventory management, a couple of websites on and that is standard practice. I know it was standard practice when I was at Head Start. They gave us a laptop, I had to sign the laptop out. If I once, if I left or was terminated, they would then require that equipment to be returned before my last paycheck would be released, otherwise the cost of those replacements would be deducted from your last check. Same with the, uh, cellphone that they issued us. So that's just, and the Head Start is a very large functioning federal grant, so it's each individual one has to apply for a grant every year, so they have to follow the rules really strictly, or they get their funds immediately yanked.
Well, as far as your inventory goes and stuff, you're spot on, everything you said. That's exactly what we do at the county, we have anything that costs more than five hundred dollars that has a serial number and has longevity, we have to actually put together an inventory card with a copy of the purchase order, a copy of the invoice, I do one step further, I take a picture of the item and put it in there, because we get audited once a year, you know, randomly by the state auditor inspector. So you're spot on, I would suggest that you do some kind of inventory card like that and take a picture of it and say, you know, when it was purchased.
I can do that, and I can email them to the town email, print it off and attach it.
As far as your radios, I mean, I know the model of those, uh, uh, radios, they're a very inexpensive radio. That doesn't prove what happened. You're probably never gonna see them unless you find them in a box somewhere or somebody, you know. Because I know for a fact that Alan and Juanita had one, uh, there was one supposed to be here at the community center on a charger, and there were supposed to be two more given to the mayor and another councilman. Because they asked my office to use our frequency in order to set the sirens off, and I gave permission for them to use that a specific frequency in the radio, so that was the only thing that was programmed in that radio was the tones to my repeaters uh, so they could activate the storm sirens, and Juanita, she, she was not, if y'all know Juanita, she was not bashful, she would call me right in the middle of a damn thunderstorm with tornadoes going all over the county, and she called me and say, I think we need to set her, set the sirens off, what do you think? And I'd say, yes, or hold off or something like that, so I know she activated the sirens several times. Uh, I would just make it a a point, you know, that if you, you wanna, you don't have, it's not doing you any good if you can't, uh, make them work. So my professional opinion is that since you can't find the radios, I would get in touch with Law and Communications. Just don't like that invoice that you had from, that's where we got, get ahold of Jeff Rinkie, this, uh, sales manager down there. Y'all can purchase how many ever you want to, and I'll still agree to let you use the frequency, and you can have him, they have a person down at Lawton that actually works on sirens. Or we have other vendors that we use in other parts of the county to come out and physically check that siren out, make sure it works, test it, program, help program radios and stuff like that. It's y'all's responsibility to set the sirens off. I cannot set off, I have too many municipalities, BoCassett and Burden, Bradley, Ellic, Rush Springs and everything. It's all, the only exception to that rule is Nene Call, because when the county took over the fire department in Nene Call, that was part of the agreement that the commissioners made that the storm sirens were with them. I didn't like that, but, you know, hey, that's just the way it is, but.
I got a question. Can this alarm be set off manually at the pole?
I think there is a button on the inside of the fire station.
Okay.
I don't, I, I'd have, I'd have to double check, you can put, uh, outside on there. I would kind of advise against it, because if you got some.
I'm just asking.
Oh, in case somebody. Yeah, man, manually, you have to go inside the fire station, I think, and actually activate.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, you don't want one outside, because somebody, you know.
Yeah.
You know, you just talked about Juanita and them, that one. I've seen her in meetings up here though, when it comes time for meetings, she always set that siren off. But she had like a push button there, she didn't have a radio.
Yeah, i, i, it's, it's one of the buttons on the radio.
She didn't have a radio like these, she just had like a little remote control there. I've seen more than one time that, that she, she could.
I, I've never seen one of those, I mean, the.
I've seen her, we sat there one night, one evening, getting ready to have a meeting, and they said, well, the siren's not going on, she's why I set it off, and she got it.
No, and she may have got ahold of Jeff. No, well, and she may have got ahold of Jeff down at Lawton Communications, and they may have a, a, another device, I, I don't know. I've only used radio.
Like a key fob.
Yeah, a key fob type deal, like.
May, and it may have, because with the antenna being on that siren there at the station, you can visibly see it from here, you know. But uh, and, and you can ask uh Lawton Communications or Goddard Enterprises, that's another company we use uh to help you uh with radios and programming and have that star- storm siren uh checked out, make sure it works.
Has it been tested a long time, I'll thank you.
Eight years.
I will apologize now, kinda, sorta. I don't have access to any kind of radio, but that night that David Payne said Bradley, get into cu- get undercover now, I done gone called and everybody and woke everybody up, and I couldn't get answered.
She called me, asking how to set off the storm siren.
But it was one thirty in the morning, I didn't give a rat a room. Y'all could be mad at me, but you'd be alive in the morning, but none, nobody else came to the storm siren, just me and my dumb bro.
I stepped out on the stairs and watched y'all.
Yeah, oh, for real.
I even called Vera and woke Vera up.
Yeah, and wake me up, I was already up, but you were asking me, how do, how do I set off the storm siren, I'm like, don't you have the radio? And that's what kicked off this whole thing. Cause if she didn't have it, and she's supposed to have it, I'm thinking, well, where is it?
Records either, but reason Cody was never given emergency manager, because his price was way too high.
Can you repeat that? I couldn't, I couldn't hear.
Yeah, I couldn't hear you either.
We're going back to motion to what, uh, not no any town over radio.
Take no action.
But to research.
Yeah.
A new way to activate.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're making a motion to not pursue.
Over radios.
Criminal, civil.
Yeah.
On old radios. But research.
Yeah, research.
New equipment. For sirens.
Yeah.
Activation.
Now who would we? Well, what do I think, uh, to get somebody to test this now?
I, I would, you know, I would suggest, because the county, the city of Chickasha and several other municipalities have used a play called Goddard Enterprises out of Edmund.
Goddard?
Goddard, G-O-D-D-A-R-D Enterprises. Um, I would suggest you get ahold of them, set up a time with Andy Goddard himself, come out and look at the siren, and he can tell you, because they deal in several different brands of sirens. And we've had him work on, we have Waylands at uh Ninnicaw, we have Federal Signal uh at the rest of them. So I, I would recommend them, because that's what we use at, on the county fire department in the county, and have them come out, and you can inquire to them about radios. He can help you with that, but he can actually come out, look at the siren, actually test it and see if there's anything that needs to be uh done, like you said, hadn't been done quite a while, so. You know, but that's, that's who I would recommend.
I will get this scanned and sent over to you, it'll be tomorrow evening.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and when you send me an email, I'll uh, ask me about Goddard Enterprises, I will send you Andy's uh phone number and stuff like that for everybody to.
And then Thursday, I'm getting off work at three thirty, three forty-five on Thursday, so I'll come straight to the office and uh start making phone calls before places shut down. Call Goddard on Thursday, see what he says.
Okay, number twelve, community comments, each person waiting to speak. To the town, Bradley Board members, we give three minutes to speak. Does anybody got any comments?
What I started to say was the reason that paperwork was never signed back when, on uh that paperwork you were talking about was never signed by the board, I told Cody Prince, because his price was ridiculous for a month.
The, the reason why Cody was never approved is because what he wanted, which was a computer. And he wanted sixteen hundred dollars a month to be our emergency management coordinator.
Yeah, computer, I could agree with, because you, you gotta have a computer, but that might be a little, that's a little much for part time.
Truck and a cellphone and an office plus salary.
You know, we, we have several. We have several volunteers in the county, one in Burden is a volunteer uh emergency manager, and he uses his own vehicle, and when he actually does business, whether it's send to training or something like that, he keeps his mileage, and then he turns in a monthly mi- mileage deal, you know. If he goes to training or something like that, well, you know, maybe the town may pay the hotel for overnight or something, but they keep paying mileage, but uh, he's a volunteer, he, David's a good guy, you know, he just, he doesn't have the proper time. You know, you, we've only got three emergency managers in the whole county, and we're a full time, myself, and Edward Perez at Chickasha, and uh Mike Fay up at Tull, so, and we just got those filled. I'm, I've been in this for twenty-six years, so, you know.
I think Ellic's got, well, they're fire, fire volunteer, fire, but.
Mark, Mark Anderson is the designated uh emergency manager for the town of Ellic. And I think he's also code enforcement and, and public works director.
Water, and he's water, and he.
Yeah.
Cop.
He's a cop, he's the emergency manager, he's the water guy, he's projects and other things, and he is also animal control.
Yeah, there's a lot of us emergency managers that uh have different hats. I, when I started with the county, I had six, now I've got one, and that's the only thing I do as emergency management now, so. But uh, but you know, whether it's, you know, I would, if you ever wanted to and everything, take an application, you know, and you inform people that they might be volunteers, you know, or if you wanna pay them a small stipend or something, you know, because they probably would need, if they was officially gonna do uh the work and stuff, you might send them a computer up here, you know, not at their house per se, but you know.
We have a town office that already has a computer.
But I would encourage you, if you can find someone that was interested, I'll be glad to mentor them and uh show them the, show them some stuff that they need to do, and it could be beneficial for y'all, especially if they go to training about grants and stuff like that, like you're learning from Amy and stuff. Some of those grants are pretty easy for small grants, but when you start getting up to some, like I wrote, that's multi-million dollar and stuff, it, you know, your application packet can be about that thick, and your documentation's enormous, and it takes months to get it prepared, so.
And I'm not trying to, like, I don't know much about it, but I do know that there was some kind of federal grant that Matthew McConaughey was part of, it was for protection of schools from gun violence. He said, the money's still sitting there, and they've got till the end of two thousand twenty-five or two thousand twenty-six to get it dispensed, or it's a use it or lose it. If they, if it's not requested and these people get it by two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, it just goes away. But he said the problem was, the packet was sixty-five, seventy pages, and it's for these small schools where your superintendent is also your principal or a classroom teacher, ag teacher, and the bus driver and janitors, and, you know, they don't have the time to sit there. So he did something to where he worked, his little organization worked with these smaller schools to help them through the grant writing.
Yeah.
And train them, because not a lot of people are trained in federal grant writing. It's this very slim, specific field.
Yeah, and it's, it's notorious as far as time goes, so.
Yeah, they're very time sensitive.
Anyway, if you do something like that, just feel free to call me, I'll be glad to talk to you about it or help somebody out on that, that'd be great.
And I've got nothing but time on my hands and grant writing experience.
Anyone else got anything to speak on? Okay, I'll uh adjourn their meeting at eight o'clock.